Oh, one.
David, how you doing, brother?
As with any hybrid meeting, we have a requirement to conduct a roll call to start the meeting. Josiah Akau. Travis Council, present. Amber Granite. Kellyanne Kobayashi. David Laia. Present. Jade Lau. Present. Mike Lee. Present. Le'vani Lipton. Carol Miyashiro.
Present online.
Present remotely. Kayla Morell. Present. Kate Ryder. Claudine Tomasa.
Present remotely.
Present remotely. Steve Trecker. Present. Evan Weber. Gary Weller. Present. John White. Donna Wong. Present. Jeff Zuckernick.
Present remotely.
Present remotely, and I am here. So. We have a quorum with nine members present in person and three members present remotely. A quorum is 10, and we have 12, which is good. The next order of business are announcements, and we have quite a few announcements tonight. First one, the Transportation and Public Works Committee will meet on the third Thursday this month, March 21st at 6:30. And it will be here in this room to enable more time to discuss the recently introduced draft Atlantic High Transportation Management Plan. The plan can be found at www.honolulu.gov/transportation. A second announcement, Mayor Blongiardi will hold a Kailua Town Hall on Thursday, March 28th at 6:30 at Kailua Intermediate School. We're looking forward to that. A third announcement, there is a rock slide mitigation project at the entrance to Lani Kai along Mokalua Drive. It'll start on April 1st and is expected to last about one month. The work will be performed on weekdays between 8:30 and 3:30. During this period, street parking in Lani Kai will be restricted for the duration of the project. And the announcement says they have dovetailed this with the work going on on the Kalapoi Roundabout Project. So this is only the length of about three or four houses, but it's right at the entrance. A fourth announcement, Kailua Wind Sports Association, a local nonprofit organization that embraces all disciplines of ocean wind sports, is hosting a community fun day featuring a Kailua Bay Marine Parade in which up to 40 windsurfers and kiteboarders will tour Kailua Bay. According to DLNR and DPR regulations, the five-mile tour will start at Kailua Beach Park, Area A, the area designated for wind sports near the entrance of the park, locally known as Kite Beach. It will from there go immediately offshore and circle the bay counterclockwise once and then return ashore at the same area. The event has a safety plan, safety escort vessel, liability insurance, and DLNR and DPR permits pending. Subject to favorable weather and wind conditions, it is tentatively scheduled for Sunday morning, March 10th, with backup dates, March 11th or 12th. A fifth and final announcement, Enchanted Lake Kailua High School upcoming running events on Thursday, July 4th. The Freedom Run for the Hawaii Epilepsy Foundation and on Sunday, November 3rd for Friends of Kailua High School. Both of these run events are one-mile walk, 5K run, and 10K run. Both events will start at 7:00 AM and finish about 9:00 AM. They both start and finish at the back of Kailua High School and go around portions of Enchanted Lake. HPD will be present at various corners. So quite a few announcements tonight. Are there any other announcements from board members? Any other announcements from our gathering tonight? Yes, Ed, if you'd go to the microphone, please.
So I'm the person involved in those two runs. Are there any concerns by board members or the community about them? They've been going on for about 22 years, 25 years, depending on which one you speak of. They go through the same route. We do have policemen stationed at various safety points. So if there's any concerns, I'd like to hear it from anyone.
I think you have a well-oiled machine.
Thanks. Mahalo.
Mahalo. A next order of business, we move on to HPD and HFD reports. Honolulu Police Department. We have HPD tonight.
Good evening. I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District 4 Community Policing. The stats for the month of February are there were three motor vehicle thefts versus five the previous month. There were nine burglaries versus four the previous month. There were 34 thefts versus 24 the previous month. There were six car break-ins, UAMVs versus 11 the previous month. And there were zero robberies versus zero the previous month. That's all I have for the stats. I can take any questions or concerns.
All right. Are there any questions for Officer Atkins of HPD tonight? Online? Any audience questions for HPD tonight? Okay. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening. My name is Alan Hackbarth. I'm the captain of the Kailua Fire Station on the engine. The February statistics for the fire department in this area, we had two structure fires, three nuisance fires, eight activated alarms. We had 98 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, two motor vehicle collisions, four mountain rescues, one ocean rescue, and one hazardous materials incident. Our fire safety tip and announcement for the month has to do with smoke alarm safety. Smoke alarms do save lives and are an important part of the home and fire escape plan. Properly installed and maintain smoke alarms give occupants early warning to get outside quickly. We want to install smoke alarms inside each bedroom and outside their sleeping areas in the hallway and on every level of the home, including the basement if there is one. Keep smoke alarms away from the kitchen or bathroom to reduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month by pressing the test button to ensure the alarm is working. If the smoke alarm requires a 9-volt battery, replace the battery every year and replace smoke alarm units every 10 years or sooner if they do not respond properly. And with that, I will take any questions.
Mahalo. Questions tonight for Captain Hackbarth, HFD? Board questions online? Any audience questions tonight for HFD? Okay. Mahalo.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item, our local agency reports. We'll start with the Board of Water Supply. Danny Ordalis.
Hi, good evening. So I have the message for the March Board of Water General Water Announcement. So help celebrate World Water Day with the Board of Water on March 22nd. This year's theme is Water for Peace. This internationally recognized event encourages water users across the globe to make a difference by changing how we use water, consume water, and manage water in our lives. During this observance, read inspirational stories and watch videos on the global water and sanitation crisis. Find out how climate change impacts our water. And you can also get water conservation tips at BoardOfWaterSupply.com as well as our social media channels. Participating agencies will include Board of Water and Department of Environmental Service and the Resilience Office. And then I have a follow-up to a question from last month's meeting. I didn't make it though. But there was a person that asked a question about the Aula Road and Ulukahiki Street 16-inch water main renewal project. They were wondering if the project was supposed to be completed in 2023. It was not. The submitted completion time is December 2024. And there were no fines issued to the contractor because the delays were held up with the permitting from the Preservation Division and the DOT. And that's all I have. Any questions?
All right. Mahalo. Questions for Danny Ordalis, Board of Water Supply tonight, David Laia.
Thank you, Daniel.
Hi.
My question is when they do complete all of the construction on that Aula Road, are they planning on finishing the resurfacing of the road to match at least what there was before, which was a brand-new road?
I don't know the exacts, but I'm pretty, I, 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 I want to say yes, but I, I'm, I don't know for sure, but I do believe that's part of the contract work is to repave and bring it back to smooth like how it was. They don't leave like the trench or the trench, you know, the trench run open like that. You know, but the.
Danny, if you want to say yes, just say yes because because it was, you know, it was a pretty big failure of the complete streets process.
Right.
That we made the road perfect and then turned around to rip it up, so.
And then here we come, yeah.
The expectation is it'll be made perfect again.
Yes, it will.
Okay, we like that answer. Other questions? Online? Questions from the audience? Okay, Susan Blanco de Court. Susan, online, do you have a question? All right. We cannot hear you, Susan. If you'd like, you could put in chat your question and we'll ask it. Okay, if we get Susan's question, Danny, if you could remain online for a few minutes. If we get the question, we'll forward it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, next, Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Good evening, Chair and Kailua Neighborhood Board members. My name is Kristi Kalohiba, Marine Corps Hawaii. A couple of things to share. Today, we were able to work with the University of Hawaii and the OLDCC, which is the Office of Oh, good heavens, all of these actors drive me crazy. They're the Washington DC component of the local defense community cooperation. They're the funding that is supporting the resiliency for the Ko'olapoko. Today, we had our, one of your board members be able to attend where the discussions were surrounded in regards to climate resiliency. Dr. Fletcher from the University of Hawaii gave a great presentation on climate change and how that is going to be impacting all of our coastal towns and this, you know, our community. And the point of having all of the community members come together, we had members from each of the Neighborhood Boards, Waimea Nalu, Kailua, with Donna, and we had Kani Ohe, Elena Bryant from Kani Ohe, and we had John Rapun from Kahalua. Along with them, we had many other community members all to discuss and talk about ways forward and to collaborate, to address some of the concerns that the communities might have. It was, it was really encouraging meeting. And if you folks have any questions, we do look forward to being able to go forward with that same project and bring it to the Neighborhood Board. So we'll be able to schedule that sometime in the future. In addition, we also have, want to remind you folks that this is a unpack year. And as they begin to bring their training exercises and what they're going to be doing, we'll be able to inform you a little bit more of what's going on. We also have a Weed Warrior Day coming up on April the 13th. If community members are interested in coming out to partner on the Marine Corps Base, you can get in touch with the Environmental Department and you can have access to the base to see how, what they're doing to control invasive species and removal of invasive plant invasive species. And if you folks have any other questions, I think that's all I have.
All right. Questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii this evening, David Laia.
Hi, thank you. It's very interested in the climate study and would love to have that before our board at whatever the schedule permits, yeah.
So the University of Hawaii is doing the presentation, but we're collaborating together with them and we'll coordinate with them to do that. And we'll work with you, Chair, and request what the month would be best for you folks.
Okay, we look forward to that. And, you know, we also understand that Marine Corps Base Hawaii is working in cooperation with the Rapid Resilient Reef for Coastal Defense Group, who have a presentation later this evening. All right. Any questions online? Any questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am, if you could use a microphone, please.
Kristi. Okay. Are you considering mangroves lining in the entrance to the base off of the H3? Are they invasive? They are being removed, but they're causing this red streak coming down the bay. Is that toxic?
I can, I can definitely check and find out about that. Rob, do you know? Okay, no. When they cut them, they're stripping. Stripper. Are we going to take them all off H3 to the next one, or how's that going? The base only is doing a portion, but we are looking at another nonprofit organization to partner with to complete more of that. Because we understand that there's some of the mangrove that comes into the shoreline of people's private property. And we have to work those contracts and, you know, approach that appropriately and legally. But we are looking at a nonprofit to assist with the funding and partnering with that nonprofit to remove the rest. But I will ask about what you're seeing.
Because what I am seeing is this, I don't know if these properties go soon as far as where the marine is and how close they're lying, but it seems like it's not on the caves. Well, not the H3. It's closer to the H3. Closer to the H3, but that is, you guys are taking them down in the H3. So when we come onto the base, do we get to see, we all want to remove mangroves and whatever?
There are place, there are certain locations that the Weed Warriors do take down mangroves. I don't know if it's going to be in that area nearest the H3 because there is a contract from somebody that's currently doing that.
Okay, Mike Lee.
Kristi. Just over the last month or two, we've had a couple of conversations. I live over on Kalahill Hillside regarding the backside gate of the Marine Corps Base. A lot of excessive speeding, you know, in that 300, 400-yard strip. Not so much as much coming in, but coming out. And what's happened when I was talking story with some of the neighbors in the area. So you guys have always done a great job being very responsive. So anything you can do, whether it's sign, if you're just reminding people as they exit the base, the drive with Aula would be much appreciated.
I concur with that 100%.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, mahalo. A next order of business are resident and community concerns. This is one of the most important parts of each of our Neighborhood Board meetings, and we'd ask residents to please try to limit your comments to three minutes. If you have a question, a comment, a suggestion, we look forward to hearing from you. Please come to the microphone. Any resident or community concerns online? Susan Blanco de Court. Susan, can you go ahead, please? Okay, we have a chat question from Susan. She would like to know about, and if there's any update on the dog park in Kailua Triangle property. The dog park is on Hamakua on the hillside, on the triangle area.
Just over the bridge. It's where the old work yard is. But Rep. Martin's online, and she had an update last week or two meetings ago.
Anyone have any definitive information? I had heard that this was proposed about three to four years ago where A and B was going to donate property to the state. The state was going to conduct some cleanup and then in turn, when they are ready, turn over a portion of the property to the city and county. And one of the proposed uses for the city and county was to was to create a dog park on a portion of the land. This has many steps of process for each one of those things before any final decisions are made and anything is implemented. The last status I had was that agreements between Alexander Baldwin and the state DLNR were imminent to enable the transfer of the land from A and B to the state. So that transfer has not yet happened, but, but I, my understanding is that it is getting close. Would anyone like to add any comment on that? Okay, are there any other community or resident concerns? Traffic Council.
This is a topic Gary brought up to me earlier and I want to expand on, but there was a concern about the electric bike fire that happened recently on, I believe, Kainalu or Kiolu. A house caught on fire after an electric bike was charging and caught on fire. More just want to acknowledge that that's definitely a concern. We've, I work for the Hawaii Bicycling League, so it's a concern we've heard not only from Kailua and other neighbors. We are working with HFD as well as HDOT to do PSAs and safety videos about this. So to Gary's point, I'll definitely bring that to the community when that's ready. But regarding e-bikes, please don't charge them unattended. And that is certainly one of those concerns we want to address, so.
Jade Lau.
Just want to ask a question to Travis about e-bikes. So today, there is a young man from Kailua Intermediate, because he's wearing his uniform shirt that says Kailua Intermediate, riding an e-bike in the middle of the road, not unlike a vehicle. That's not allowed, correct?
I would need more information than that, but technically bikes have the same rights and rules as vehicles, so they could be in the roadway.
The electric bikes that go like a moped.
Well, so electric bikes, there's a specific, that they, if, without knowing what you're, what exactly it is, if it's not registered or not licensed, then it's probably not supposed to be on the roadways. But yeah, generally 20 to 28 miles an hour is the max for an electric bike, and it should have operable pedals. So if you're talking about something that's more of a high-speed stuff, yeah, yeah. But yeah, they're defined as bicycles.
Thanks.
Of course.
Travis, is it true that general bicycle rules apply to e-bikes until such time as separate rules are created?
Yes, so in the definitions, the Hawaii definitions of a bicycle, it's now there's two pieces of a traditional bicycle, which doesn't have an electric motor, and a bicycle that has a motor less than 750 watts that can go up to 28 miles an hour. And so they're both defined as a bicycle and the same rights, rules as a normal bicycle apply to those, which is basically like a vehicle, which means you have to stop and operate like normal. There's gray zones out there because the rules haven't caught up with the technologies, unfortunately, but working with Chris Lee and a few others to update those. But it's an ongoing either issue or at least opportunity to improve, so.
All right. Mahalo. Any other resident or community concerns? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Doug. Just a question regarding electric bikes. In terms of having motorized vehicles go up and down the sand on Kailua Beach, it's my understanding that only emergency vehicles or police vehicles or city and county vehicles doing specific work restoration are allowed to have motorized vehicles on the sand. But over the last six, nine, 12 months, we've started to see a whole bunch of electric bikes going up and down the sand on Kailua Beach. So it's an open question. Is this an issue? It seems a little bit dangerous to me, especially when you have lots of little kids running in and out of the waves. And if it is an issue, how can it be addressed?
We will take that for research. There are posted signs at Kailua Beach Park on activities that are prohibited and.
A quick clarification back to the definitions. Technically speaking, an electric bicycle is a bicycle, not a motorized vehicle. Just the way it's currently defined, it falls under a bicycle. Not, even though it has a motor on it, I'm not saying it doesn't have a motor, but legally speaking, it is a bicycle, not a. it is a bicycle, not a, so it can go everywhere that a bicycle can go. But I think you raise concerns. Electric stuff and oceans don't mix very well, so I wouldn't recommend riding on the beach, but we'll, we'll look at it in the Transportation Committee as well.
We'll, we'll take that for action to, to see what the rules say, if there are existing prohibitions, if, if there are not, that's something worthy of consideration.
Well, that raises two questions. One is the speed at which they travel. There's no way that a pedaled bicycle on sand can go even 10% as fast as those electric bicycles go. And the second question you, you raised is, how are they designated as bicycles and not motorized vehicles when they actually do have a motor?
And again, these are low-speed electric bicycles, so that's the, some of those high-speed ones are not defined as a, as a bicycle and would be technically a motorized vehicle, much more like a moped or a motorcycle. So a traditional, you know, 20 mile an hour electric bike is considered a bicycle by definitions, therefore allowing it on multi-use paths and things of that sort. But again, high-speed stuff and etiquette still certainly should overrule any of those things, so.
Officer Atkins, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
The discussion is electric bikes on the beach, or any, any private vehicle apart from city vehicles used for lifeguards and beach maintenance. To your knowledge, are there any current prohibitions?
Yeah, so he's exactly right. Sorry, I forget his name from the Bicycle League, but bicycles are allowed, and that does include electric bicycles under the 750 watts, even though they do have a motor. Anything with a motor that's over 1750 watts would be considered, you know, a motorized vehicle, which are not allowed on the beach. So yes, it's a very gray area. These electric bikes are considered bicycles, so they are technically within the law.
Okay, so there's the answer. E, electric bikes are considered the same as bicycles and are allowed currently on the beaches. And Councilmember Kiana, if, if, if we could ask your staff to, to consider if an update to the, the law is appropriate, because the gentleman raises a good point that electric bikes have much more capability than regular bicycles, and as they kick up sand and go at some speed on the beach, it presents a hazard to people on the beach. And this might just be a case where the laws have not kept up with the evolving technology. Any other resident or community concerns this evening? Okay, mahalo. We'll move on to mayor and governor reports, starting with Mayor Rick Longiardi's representative. And we have Shane Enright tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Director Ireland sends his best to everyone. A few things, sorry, and I have to read off of my phone. This month's highlights from the mayor's newsletter, the town hall meetings are coming back. If you remember, they had them last year, and I believe the Winward Side meeting was at Benjamin Parker Elementary School in Kaniohue. There's no details on those yet, but we'll have those to you once they become available, but they'll be coming out soon. Transportation Secretary stopped for a visit on Inahuahua, Onahuahua, the city's first climate adaption strategy was adopted by the city council. And, yep, that's about it for, and the mayor commemorated Black History Month in February. Couple of things that are coming up, DDC is going to be beginning a rockslide mitigation project on Mokalua Drive. That's to begin April 1st. It's expected, anticipated to last about a month, but you know how those things go, but about a month. There's supposed to be a PDF on the Google Drive with more information. The work hours are 8:30 to 3:30, excluding holidays. But let me know if you have further questions on that. A couple of the issues that we have answers back for, we had the concerns with the homelessness at Kailua Beach Park and CORE, which falls under the department that I represent. HSD went out and spoke to three individuals there, and they actually did give some sort of sense that they would like future housing, but at the time, they didn't accept our offer. And so we have to just continue efforts in meeting with them to see if they will take us up on, on those shelter efforts. We can't do anything to force them to, to come with us. We don't have any enforcement capabilities. The parking issue on Makali East Street, the answers, excuse me, it's going to be addressed pending the draft LaniKai Transportation Management Plan, which was presented to the community on February 27th, and there's a 60-day comment period. So after that, this says that there's going to be an answer on that parking issue. I guess it's all tied together. And a couple of issues with the Kapaua Quarry Road, I'm not too sure, Chair, if there is a representative from DDC. It suggests that I allow the representative to discuss the mapping question of the jurisdiction of Kapaua Quarry Road and which part of it the city was responsible for. If not, please let me know, and I'll try to get a, a better answer for that, because there's also two further Kapaua Quarry questions regarding drainage and the constant issue with the cutting of the vegetation, which I don't have any dates on when the work is gonna, gonna happen again. I don't have any further information on those two agenda items, and I'm sorry about that. But that is about it for what I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay, we have a few questions. Levani Lipton.
Aloha, Shane. This is more of an open-ended question, but I get asked this, and I've also been wondering about it. When we have big storms, there is significant flooding on Kailua Road near Times, near that shopping center. And, you know, not only is it dangerous because people swerve away from it and kind of cross into the other lane, but I'm just wondering what we can do to kind of mitigate the stormwater runoff? I mean, it's a common problem, everyone knows about it, and people send me photos, but from a water quality or pollution standpoint, and also a safety, is there any way that we can either create drainage or redirect the water somehow, or find a way to absorb it, because it happens after every time we have a big rainstorm? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's a simple question. We have similar issues near Kalapaua Market, and the Roundabout Project is $1 million, Roundabout, and $7 million drainage. So it's, it's probably not a simple answer, but it, all these things where there are persistent problems should be part of a, a master plan, and we'd be interested to know what, what the master plan would entail. Mahalo. Other questions for Shane Enright tonight, from board members, online board members, audience questions? Yes, ma'am, if you could use the microphone, please.
I have a question about the rockslide mitigation project at the entrance of LaniKai. Is there going to be sufficient notice given to all the people coming to LaniKai that there's only one lane? Are going to be a lot of signage for that? And the best if the signage is not like right there, but way far away when people enter Kailua?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Yeah, that's a very good question. I don't have the answer in the, my notes right here. It might be in the Google Drive, Chair, but I can ask and see if we can get that back to you in an email, and I'll definitely suggest that to them. So, because for emergency vehicles as well, we don't like that area getting all clogged up with traffic if it doesn't need to be. So thank you.
Thank you.
The city in the past has put notice far and wide when there are construction-related restrictions on parking in LaniKai, and this would, you know, this is projected to, to last about one month. The road will be limited to one way alternating for periods of time during the day, and parking is restricted for the one-month length of the project. So Shane, in the past, signs have gone up as far away as Castle Medical Center, but, but certainly Kalapaua Market onward needs to be well noticed. Yes, ma'am, if, if I could ask you to use the microphone, please?
Yeah, that's going to be a mess. A tip for signage, I think, would be avoid area, because tourists come in there just because it's a looky-loo, and there's not going to be any parking, but I think the, just the verbiage that says avoid area would help.
Yeah, absolutely. Not a, a great place to even do a sightseeing drive when the construction would be alternating directions and sometimes stopped altogether, and you, you, you know the drill, but the tourists don't. Okay, other questions for Shane this evening? April 1st is the projected start date, and the projected length is one month. And, and the announcement says they have dovetailed it in with the Kalapaua Roundabout construction project.
And if I could add, they, they did mention special duty police officers to help with the traffic flow. And then if anybody, Chair, are you interested in a phone number for questions or concerns? I can give that out. It's not a difficult phone number.
Uh, ye, yes, go ahead, please.
It's just 808-768-8400. And that's, one more time was 808-768-8400, and that is to DDC with any questions on the project.
Okay, 768-8400. Mahalo. There was discussion for a number of meetings about Kailua Beach Park operating hours. It's not on our agenda tonight, but it is on the agenda for Parks and Recreation Committee meeting next Thursday. And I'd asked Director of Parks and Recreation Laura Thielin if she could address that tonight due to a scheduled conflict. She's unable to be here, but she did provide some written input, which I'll quickly read just so it's on the record before we enter into any discussions. The, the, the city and county have many beach parks on island which are closed between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Kailua Beach Park is not one of them. There was some discussion about possibly making that change, or possibly making that change for one or two nights a week because of the issues with the inability to, to clear out possessions that are left at, at the beach park. When, when people are doing unauthorized camping, that can be cited, but the possessions remain. So because the city has long experience with developing procedures in place at the other beach parks on island, these are the parameters already put in practice at those that are closed, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. People may traverse a beach park at night to reach the beach. Hawaii case law is well established that people have the right to access to reach the ocean, so long as they are not hanging out in the park and are traversing the park to go sit on the beach, they are not violating the rules. Canoe clubs may be given a permit for staying overnight with their canoe. We often do this at regatta season, as long as they have the permit on them at the park at night, which is a standard permit condition. The closure rules allow them to be there with a permit. Regarding penalizing casual mistakes, such as I thought I was sitting on the beach, it's not clear where the park ends and the beach begins. Our experience with enforcement of park closure hours is the courts want to see that police educate people and first give them the opportunity to comply with the law. Police generally will tell you, they follow the practice of telling people what the rule is and ask them to move because they know the court will not uphold a citation if they don't do so. If the person moves to the authorized beach area, there should be no violation. So this is how it operates in practice at, at those beach parks on island where there are existing nighttime closure hours. I can't elaborate, those are just the words of the director. And it is on the Parks and Recreation Committee agenda next Thursday. Anything else for Shane? Okay, mahalo. We'll move on to Governor Green. Green's representative, Aaron Connor, aloha.
I brought with me tonight Governor Green's March newsletter, so it's on the table. It was also provided to you in the Google Drive. I do not have, unfortunately, I apologize for this, answers to last month's questions. I just wasn't able to get them in time for tonight's meeting, but I do expect to be able to send you an email to provide that information very early next week, as I will be hounding the departments to provide those responses to me. So I'm here to take any questions you have this evening.
All right. Questions for Aaron? Questions online? Questions from the audience? Aaron, that pretty much sets a time record.
I'm happy to do that for you, Chair.
Okay. We'll mark the time, 7:49. We're going to move on to elected official reports. These reports are in random order each month. Tonight, Representative Scott Matioshi has the lead. He's actually live on the air on PBS Insights right now. Is there a representative for Representative Matioshi?
Yes, hi.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Fahina. I'm from Representative Matioshi's office, and he wishes to be here, but again, he is currently on PBS Insights Live talking about the feral chicken issue. And so I will just be updating you all on bills and issues that our office is currently working on, and any questions or concerns, I'll try my best to answer it, but if not, I will follow up with you later. So we are halfway through our legislative session, and so some of the bills that Representative Matioshi that introduced, that has crossed over to the Senate, is, the first bill is HB 1944. It relates to workers' compensation, and it helps to get injured workers treated quicker and back to work safer and faster. The second bill that I will be highlighting is HB 1945. This relates to a lead cash-out program... This relates to a lead cash-out program and provides incentive for correction facility workers to show up for work. And so this reduces burnout and overtime costs. Overtime costs were $30 million last year. The next bill that I will be highlighting is HB 1946. This bill would establish a process improvement office to better government efficiency. And so this bill is going to be heard and then move over to other departments eventually. The next bill is HB 2758, and this is an invasive species bill. This would help control the spread of invasive species, especially fire ants, which is a growing problem here on the Windward side. And so the last bill that I will be highlighting is the Majority Caucus Bill that Representative Matiosi authored. And so this relates to hiring. And it allows for state departments, divisions, or agencies to review applicant minimum qualifications to help expedite state's hiring process. And so this intended bill is to help fill vacancies. Tomorrow is the resolution filing deadline, and so I'm just going to highlight some of the resolutions that Representative Matiosi introduced. So the first resolution is dealing with military housing. And so this request for military increases housing for active-duty families to help free up the housing market for local residents. Another resolution is dealing with automated external defibrillators, or AEDs. And so this encourages private businesses with 30-plus employees to have AEDs on site. And our office would like to thank Board Member Zuckernick for encouraging this legislation. Our next resolution is annual leadership. And this request that the governor establishes a leadership accelerator program for exceptional managers in state government. Another resolution we have is department hiring, deals with department hiring. And this urges departments to review job minimum qualifications and provide suggested changes to the Department of Human Resources Development. And the last bill that our resolution that I will be highlighting tonight urges state departments to allow telework where appropriate. This insensitive sensivizes people to work in government for flexibility and will hopefully increase retention rates. And so these are just some of the bills and resolutions that Matiosi has introduced. Again, if you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them, but if not, follow up with a later date. And don't hesitate to reach out to our office via email or phone if anything else.
Okay, mahalo. Questions for Fahina for Representative Matiosi? Online? The audience? In a sentence or two, could you explain to me a little bit how this works with regard to military housing?
Yeah, that's a great question. I will, I can actually send you the resolution when it comes out, when a number has been assigned to it, because I am not too familiar with this one.
Okay, fair enough. All right, mahalo. For the 67 people who tuned into the Kailua Neighborhood Board rather than PBS Insights, mahalo for being with us tonight. Next is Senator Chris Lee. Representative Lisa Martin.
Aloha. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Perfect, okay. So first of all, it was nice to see Donna this morning on the Marine Corps base. I'm really excited about this proactive planning process, even though the topic is very depressing. I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of some of the things that are going on in the community with little fire ants. So we finished the Lani Kai survey, and Lani Kai has the inauspicious situation of having the worst infestation on Oahu. So the worst one off besides Hawaii Island. And there's seven pockets. There was three that are not under treatment, and we weren't sure how big they were. And we finished, about two weeks ago, we finished the delimiting survey to figure out where the boundaries of those three infestations are. And not this weekend, but the one after, on the 16th of March, they're going to start treatment. So that's pretty exciting. It's hard for me as a rep to go around telling people how terrible this is, how important it is, and then we delay treatment for a few months. So I'm really excited that we're going to get to that phase. Our agencies, our state agencies that help with this don't really have the manpower to do all of the work. So it's going to be really important to have community participation, which I'm hoping we will have in Lani Kai, to make it easy for them to go in and treat. So they're not, you know, waiting for people, you know, calling people every time they get to new house and waiting for a gate code and things like that. One reason I bring this up is that Lani Kai will definitely not be the only community that needs to go through this. As soon as that's underway, I want to get back to Kailua Hillside, where there is also an infestation that has not yet been fully delimited, and we haven't started treatment. And I'm sure there will be other pockets as well. So that's something to really be vigilant about and to be happy that the treatment works. So it's something that we can really, we can proactively stop this infestation because the treatment does work if we know where to put it. Another thing I wanted to mention, just because when you do legislation, sometimes it has, does not have the intended effect because nobody knows about it. Last year, I requested that the DOTAX make a simplified N-11 form for people who are living off Social Security, and they don't owe taxes, so they don't file taxes. And when that happens, they don't get their food excise tax credit. We often have a discussion in the legislature over whether we should eliminate G E T taxes specifically on food. And we always say, no, we don't have to do that because that way we can charge our tourists for it, and we can simply give it back to people through this refundable tax credit. But people who don't owe taxes are likely the ones that need it the most, and they have paid that G E T tax, and they won't get it back. So now the form is super simple. For people that need help with it, they can get it at Kailua Library. You need to mail it in and send in a copy of your ID with it. And that way you can get a check for $220 back in the mail per person. So I really encourage, if you folks know anyone who might, you might have a neighbor that might be elderly and living on Social Security, please make sure they know about this because I believe a lot of times people just don't take advantage and get their tax credit. I want to mention that it's crossover. There's a lot of bills going over to the Senate, and I'm not going to make you listen to all of them. But I did want to mention that the community survey shows that mental health homelessness issues remain the most distressing for our community. And we do have several, several bills on that which look at doing a better job triaging people, diverting them from HPD, diverting them from ER, and getting them into critical care centers that can do a better job. And this is something that will take quite a bit of binding, but what we found is it saves us money in the long run. So I'm really hopeful that some of these bills will make it all the way through and will have better systems in place. And the last thing I wanted to mention is I know you folks have a resolution tonight on zoning bill. And I just want to tell you that that is my least favorite bill of this entire session from either House. I think it's a really big deal. And I think if there is not a lot of opposition to it, it will pass and will become law. So I do urge you folks to look at it seriously. It will pass if we don't, if Oahu doesn't stand up. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. I was going to ask you to comment on that if you weren't already. Questions for Representative Martin? David Laia?
Representative Martin, I thank you very much for your diligence with the little fire ants. I think the more we can do upfront is going to be very positive for us being able to prevent the spread of the little fire ants. I participated in Kahalua gathering of community members that used different types of treatment for the little fire ants. We were taught by a young man who understood, took the time on his own to study it and become proficient in using the baits and applying the bait. And as a small group of about eight or 10 people, we were able to cover a very large area very simply. The treatment is relatively inexpensive, highly effective. It's a low-dose type of pesticide that has a long-lasting presence and is very effective. And it seems very simple that we could have small community groups being able to volunteer and go out and address those neighborhoods that are affected. And it would be very simple to have like a certification program where certain individuals who volunteer for that can become certified as trainers and help community members participate in this process. I recall several months ago when you shared with us the outbreak of the little fire ants in Lani Kai. And I'm really kind of surprised that it's been several months for having a response. And I do understand that the human resource aspect of the capacity to address the areas is an issue. So I would just call out to you to say, we in our community are actively involved and are very concerned and would be, love to participate in a certification program or a community volunteer effort that would allow us to go out and provide that type of treatment. So I would like to encourage you to consider that option. And I certainly would support it.
Thank you, David. Would you like to come to Lani Kai the weekend after next? When we are training a little Hawaii ant lab and always will be training community members. And we are trying to get the people, you know, right around the infestations to help. But it sounds like you have some background and some interest, and we'd love to have you as an ambassador to help us as different areas get. So please email my office because we'd love that kind of energy to help all the spots as they come up in Kailua. And in terms of how long it's taken, you're absolutely right. It's horrible. They did go ahead and treat the public areas on the beach to give them credit, you know, from the beginning. But for the other areas, we got rained out on one of the days that they were supposed to survey. They'd come over from the Big Island, and they didn't manage to get back for, you know, two months. Thank you.
Okay. All right, mahalo.
I did see a question in the chat. I didn't know if you wanted me to respond.
Okay, the chat question is, which bill are we talking about? And for the land use. And that's Senate Bill 3202 and House Bill 1630, which require the counties to allow the development of a minimum of three housing units per existing residential lot. And that will be discussed later on in our meeting in a motion. Okay, mahalo.
Thank you.
Councilmember Esther Kiaina.
Aloha and good evening. I have a couple of follow-ups based on concerns by board members as well as residents. For Board Member Weller, he had expressed concerns about barely being able to see the stripes on Kapaa Kori Road. And if you were not aware, they closed the road on Sunday to repaint it. So you might want to go and check it out. And they also put up signs. Kihaapi, the property where the city is going to be building an affordable housing project, you complained that the maintenance, it was just out of control. I understand that DFM has cleared it. There is EV on the property, and so it is appropriately demarcated. But we have still yet to take down the wood and the, you know, the screens, the black screens. And so that will be addressed. With regard to Kapaa Kori flooding, Kapaa Kori Road flooding, as people have seen within the last month or so, there's been severe flooding. We had to find out what the source was. The source was coming from the border water supply reservoir. And what is happening is that it's actually leaking. And so they have created a diversion around the reservoir so that the water is no longer flowing onto Kapaa Kori Road. It is actually flowing now to Kaniohe Bay. It is a short-term solution. The longer-term solution was already in the queue. They will be, they will be building, the city will be building a new reservoir, and it's ready on the site and properly allocated. If you continue to see any flooding, just let me know. And as the Chair mentioned earlier, the Lani Kai Transportation Management Plan, we are, the city is receiving comments until April 30. Gloria of my office will put into the chat box both the link where you could read about the plan and as well as the email address for comments, which would be dts@honolulu.gov. Barnacles, as many of you know, was triggered in Lani Kai because someone on their street decided to call the company that installs barnacle. It is illegal for them to be putting this on anyone's cars, which are partially or fully on public property. Please call HPD if it happens to you. And lastly, I wanted to thank Representative Tokura. I don't know if her staff is on. I'm not going to announce the amount of money that they just got passed in the House Appropriations Bill, but it was quite significant. It was for a Marine Corps Base Hawaii Water Reclamation Compliance Upgrade. State lawmakers in the region, as well as myself, supported 227 million. Again, I'm going to wait for her office to announce it, but I'm so proud of her because this is her first year. And she didn't get all of it, but it's quite significant. And what helps Kaniohe Bay also helps Kailua. I mean Kaniohe Marine Corps Base. Thank you so much.
Mahalo. So the flooding on Kapaa Kori Road is being contributed to by leakage from the 2-million-gallon reservoir up by H3?
Across Mokapo Boulevard, yes.
Yeah, okay. And the plan there was going to be to replace the existing 2-million-gallon reservoir with a 1-million-gallon reservoir. Now the plan is to replace it with two 1-million-gallon reservoirs.
I'm not sure about the replacement, the amount. So no, I'm not sure about that. But I do know that it was in the works.
Yes.
But I think it is concerning to me because I went up there. The seepage is severe. And it's so much so that you'd have to have, there is a ditch that has been created around it to be able to collect all the seepage coming down, and it's being diverted away from Kapaa Kori Road right now. I think it's serious.
Yeah, we had no idea from BWS. But we do know that the plan was amended. Originally was going to be a new 1, 1-million-gallon reservoir. Now it's staggered, one offset from the existing one. And they removed the existing one, and then they put a second 1-million-gallon new one in.
How about I clarify that for you and the next one? I'm not quite familiar with the different replacements, but I can get you that. I think I just wanted to alert everyone about what the source was, how it's being addressed in the short term and what the longer-term solution is.
Okay, questions for Councilmember Kiaina, Mary Weller?
I want to thank you.
I want to thank you. Those three problems that you solved in less than 30 days have been problems that I've been talking about for the last 10 years. So I'm very pleased, I wanted to thank you for that. You probably saved lives because the water from the, if it is from the water towers up there, big trucks would go through the water super fast because the water doesn't bother them, and homeowners would have to go through the water very slow. And many times, the trucks would send water all over your car windshield, and you couldn't see. So I thank you for that. And then the road hasn't been restripped as long as I can remember. And there's no streetlights on that road because of the birds and the marsh. So having that restripped is very important, and I want to thank you for that. And the neighbors down the street with the low-income housing are going to go, I thank you for that, too. So thank you very much, Esther.
And we'll mention in the members attending other meetings, the meeting that you facilitated on storm water quality. We really appreciate your forward-looking efforts in addressing a major problem affecting the watershed area all the way to Kailua Bay.
Thank you guys for organizing that. I know it's disappointing with regard to the parameters of what the city is proposing to undertake, but it is a measured improvement of what exists. And the fact that the Director of the Department of Environmental Services, I'm sorry, Department of Facility Maintenance was there, I think it was important for him to hear about the bigger picture, even including myself. And hopefully that will be raised at the Mayor's Town Hall. I think an assessment, financial assessment needs to be made with regard to your proposal because it's going to take a collective approach by county, state, and federal lawmakers to secure the funding necessary to do a major, a major storm water management project of that magnitude.
Well, we're encouraged that it's not a one-and-done idea, that there are larger things that can have more impact that are being seriously considered.
Absolutely. And if you recall, and I'm fully supporting, they are seeking some federal funding in the appropriations bill, which I already raised to Representative Tokura when I was in DC within the last month. And it's going to look at the larger issue that we've all talked about. But I'm hoping that within their current funding mechanism, that they could use some of those funds for the same purpose.
Okay. Other questions? Next, Senator Jarrett Keahokealoli. And representing the senators tonight is Jules Pele Holani.
Yes, thank you. Aloha Chair and Kailua Neighborhood Board. I'm here on behalf of Senator Keahokealoli. I just came here actually to invite the Kailua constituents. Our office is hosting a constituent field trip to the Hawaii State Capitol, and we wanted to open it up to you folks first before I put it on an e-mail blast that will go out to everyone. The reason is, is I only have 15 spots available. So I just wanted to invite you folks. It's on Tuesday, March 19th, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. And this is an opportunity to just spend a day with Senator, as well as myself and my staff. And you guys will be able to tour the Capitol. I'll have you guys participating in hearings with Senator, as well as watching and participating on the House and Senate floor sessions. With this being said, I decided to throw in a bus to do a pick-up and drop-off here at the Laualala parking lots, which A&amp;B was able to offer to our office. I also asked Senator that we provide lunch and refreshments for our constituents for our day. So last year, we hosted the Kanoehe constituents. So this year, I want to invite the Kailua constituents. So I'm going to leave the flyer, which you guys can use a QR code to sign up. Trust me, you guys will have a good time with us and our staff and Senator. So mahalo for that. If you folks need to call our office, any legislation that you folks feel like you guys have questions for Senator, I ask that you folks call our office or email him so that I can have him respond. So with that being said, if any of you are interested, please sign up before I e-blast it on Monday. So 15 spots available. So thank you very much.
Mahalo, Jules. That's Tuesday, March 19th. Okay. Questions? Gary Weller?
I want to thank you for your wonderful newsletter. I've spoken to you in the past about it, but maybe you should announce how people can subscribe to it. The Senator puts out a newsletter that talks about everything that's going to go on, on this side of the island, and when the roads are going to be closed, what's going on with the schools, and many other things that are very important to everyone on the winward side. So if you would tell them how they can subscribe, I think that would be a benefit.
So I provide an e-mail blast to all our constituents in Senate District 24. You will receive the e-blasts Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays at 5:00 a.m. And what we do with my staff is I make them research every notification of the agencies from federal, state, and our city, as well as all the schools, parks, any event that is happening. I ask them that we get all of this information in the e-newsletter. So if you haven't signed up for our e-newsletter, it's on our Capitol website, and on top of there, you can look for Senator Jarrett Keahokealoli's page. We update his webpage every week. So there is new things going on at the Capitol that we can provide information for you. So the link is available on there, and I advise you folks to sign up because of the road updates. That is my champion leads, and it has always been, ever since me and Senators making 10 years now, working together. And it has been the champion leads for you folks so that you folks have firsthand of all the road updates for the following weeks or on the weekends. So please sign up, or you can call our office, which we can help you get these e-newsletters three times a week at 5:00 a.m. in the morning. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions online in the audience? Yeah, if you weren't going to say it, I was. It is 5:00 a.m. every time somebody presses the send button at 5:00 a.m., and Jules, would that be you? And mahalo for your support of Kailua Neighborhood Board as well. Okay, we move on. Representative Natalia Hossi-Burdek.
Hi, everyone. Please bear with me while my lovely office manager, Nadia, shares screen on my presentation. So I was going to get into the bills. I know this group in particular was very passionate about disaster preparedness and wildfire prevention bills. We got really into the details a couple of weeks ago with the Community Emergency Response Team at a presentation I did about the legislation and the funding items that are up at the legislature. And we got to meet our first responders and make connections with them, and it was really great. So if you missed that meeting, it is up on my YouTube, youtube.com-at-repnhp, and there's a QR code right there. Next. I did just want to mention, oh, actually, you guys already mentioned it, but that February 18th house fire in Kamalino was caused, next, by one of those e-bikes. The battery exploded, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows, it doesn't matter whether it's charging, whether it's not charging, whether the battery's full, battery's dead. That battery can explode at any time, so really just be careful where you're parking those. The issue was they had parked it in their garage, which they thought was a safe place, but it turned their garage into a tinderbox. So with so many e-bikes that I see around the road, just use caution for you and your I am very concerned about the fire risk on Kalahau Hillside. I've been in discussions, as you know, with A&amp;B since August. They're the landowners of both sides of the Kalahau Hillside. They just provided me with a timeline and kind of a draft white-paper fire management plan. Basically, they've been doing monthly inspections of the hillside. And while I do appreciate that they are doing this, it has been required the whole time. ROH 10.13.10.4 says, "They shall at all times maintain an effective fire break by removing and clearing flammable vegetation and combustible growth from areas within 30 feet of such buildings or structures." As of May 4th, they let me know that the majority of the area behind the residences have been cleared. Remaining areas are supposed to be addressed in 30 to 60 days, but as I mentioned, they should have been doing this from the beginning. This is part of our fire code. They will be having a community wildfire prevention fair in May or June at Ikahe Park Shopping Center. I'll be helping to publicize that information as it becomes available. But they do seem to be making good progress, better late than never, I suppose. Gary, I'll send you that slide. I'm glad we also brought up the Kapaa Kori Road flooding. I've been getting a lot of calls and emails about things like grass and parks that need to be mowed, and potholes that need to be fixed, and a lot of that has been made progress. I saw some city workers out there on February 13th, and as Councilmember Kiaina mentioned last time, there is kind of some state and county nexus here. Kapaa Kori Road is actually owned partially by the state, partially by the county, and partially private owners. And so there's actually been a couple of bills up this year and almost every year to address, to use public funding to address flooding issues on private roads. I kind of have mixed feelings about that bill. I feel like if the public is putting money into fixing that flooding, the public should own that road. So I'll let you know if that bill passes or not. But I've been trying to get a work order number on this because, as Councilmember Kiaina said, this is kind of a broader issue that, you know, with or without the leaking of the water tank, that area frequently floods. So it's something that does need a drainage plan, and we really need to nail down who owns which parts of the road and how to make that happen, like Levani was talking about. Little fire ants, I've got some good news on that. So the infestation in Olomana, I've been in discussions with the Hawaii Ant Lab, and they reported that actually, they did a whole bunch of testing of, I forget the number, something like 70, 80, 90% of the houses in that area. And almost all of them came back negative, except for the one house that was initially infested. So this is why it's so critical that everybody go home and test their house right now, because this is a success story. This is somewhere where we caught it early, and now that community is no longer infested with fire ants. If we hadn't caught that one house, that whole community would be impacted. So they're now going to be in the monitoring phase for the next two years. They're going to be doing regular tests. And I just encourage everybody, we can treat them if we know where they are. So go home and treat your, test your house today if you haven't already. Next. We're going to be doing an LFA test kit distribution event, like our Kanoe representatives did. Senator Keahokealoli and Rep. Matayoshi and Rep. Kitagawa spearheaded it. It went really well. If you're interested in signing up for this, if you want to help pass out little fire ant test kits to your neighbors, please let me know. There's a QR code right there you can sign up on, or just send me an email or phone call or a text. We have a date tentatively set for May, sorry, March 23rd, and I will, of course, let you know the details. Thank you. Next. And lastly, just want to mention that I have a community survey out. Please take the survey. These are some issues that I kind of have mixed feelings on. I kind of know how I feel about them or lean about them, but I still just want to touch base with my community and make sure that I am at least checking the temperature and making sure I'm representing my community well. So thank you very much. I believe that's it. Is there anything else? Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Mahalo. Questions for Natalia? Questions online? David Laye?
Hi, Bill. Thanks. Hi, Natalia. Thank you on that little fire ant issue. I recalled that we were trying to get some kinds of legislation passed to address the violators of the people who bring in those little fire ants, all the ag and nurseries that come particularly from the Big Island and go to Waialo, and then get distributed through and sold through to other consumers and cause the actual spread of the fire ants. And we were trying to get something passed that would prevent or isolate or identify these bad actors and shut that activity down so we wouldn't have the little fire ants here. Can you give us an update on what the status of that is?
Yeah, and forgive me because I don't have my spreadsheets in front of me, but I believe there were something like 11 bills introduced like that this year. I introduced one, several of, I think all of our winward legislators introduced a type of little fire ant bill. I believe that Senator, and if you guys are online or your staff, feel free to correct me, but I believe that Senator Keahokealoli's and Rep. Matayoshi's are both still alive. And part of it also doesn't necessar, so, okay, it's like a two-pronged approach. So legislation is one tool in our toolbox. Another tool is the legislation that we passed last year, the year before I got into office, I believe, that required DOA to update their rules and basically allow them access to these places for enforcement. And then another tool is litigation. And I am surprised that I haven't yet heard of any lawsuits of, you know, the mass damage that's being caused by these bad actor nurseries, but I suspect that some will be popping up soon.
All right. Other questions? Yes.
Do you want to come up? Do you know who owns the property and is therefore responsible for, you know, managing the wildfire risk where the pillbox is?
The pillbox trail? Yes, that'd be the Department of Land and Natural Resources state.
I didn't know. Thank you, Chair. Are there steps being taken to mitigate the wildfire risk there? It gets very dry.
I'm not going to dare attempt an answer.
Because we would all be trapped in Lani Kai, and we would all burn if that killed enough.
Yeah, there are very serious efforts in Lani Kai to increase awareness and evacuation options in the event of a wildfire and flooding. What is the date of the fair in Lani Kai?
Yes, Chair. Lani Kai will be holding an emergency preparedness fair April 14th. I believe that's a Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's basically for that community because they're very concerned about the wildfire
Because of the road conditions and the single road, people need to also be aware of the possibility of pedestrian evacuation through Blue Stone to Enchanted Lake, and also possible evacuation through Midpac. And I know there are efforts in the community that are very active at identifying individuals who would have difficulty evacuating because of mobility or other issues, and neighbors watching out for neighbors. Very serious. We're prepared. Lisa Martin, can you add to that?
I can, thank you. So in terms of who owns the land, actually, it's the private properties downhill from the ridge that own most of the land going up to the ridge behind their property. The state only owns a little strip right along the top of the ridge line, pretty much. And then on the backside, it's Kamehameha Schools. So it's, you know, we can't force private property owners to do too much. But as Bill has said, the community has really, is working hard to become a fire-wise community in collaboration with some like state and nonprofit fire in collaboration with some like state and nonprofit fire savvy organizations. And they have negotiated to have an alternative route to exit by car through Midpac, through the golf course that would take you out to Yana Street and Enchanted Lake. So it's a work in progress, but there's a lot going on. And I would encourage the woman who asked, you know, to join those conversations with the La Ni Kai Association if she's interested.
Okay.
Yes. The fire code applies equally to public landowners, private landowners, and even government landowners. The problem is, is we don't really have enforcement. And that's why when I was on the wildfire prevention working group, we recommended that we get a fire marshal. We're the only state that doesn't have a fire marshal whose job would be enforcement. We do have some, HFD is probably like screaming at me right now because they do do some enforcement, but obviously they're so understaffed and they just don't have the time or resources to really investigate every piece of land all throughout the state. But the fire marshal would, and that's why that bill is so important. And there were at least 11 bills on that moving forward. Last I checked, there were two still left alive. So I do think that we should have a fire marshal by the end of the year.
And one thing we learned with the, Rep. Martin, correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, but one thing we learned with the fence being installed by Marine Corps Base Hawaii at Bellows, Marine Corps Training Area, Bellows, was that there would be a fire break associated with that 30 feet or so, as I recall. Anything you'd like to add to that?
I think they had planned to clear 10 feet on either side of the fence. We don't have, I mean, we asked for them to not build the fence up on the ridge line, you know, going by La Ni Kai. So there will not be a fence in that part. But for parts of Enchanted Lakes, there will be, you know, presumably that fire break if they, or Kea Lo Hills, if they do maintain that.
Right. Okay. Other questions? Gary Weller?
I was glad you mentioned the fire marshal. I did a lot of research on that because Hawaii is the only state that doesn't have one. And on the mainland, the fire marshal has police powers. If a landowner doesn't attend to their vegetation the way that the law is set, he can be arrested and thrown into jail for being a criminal. So if Hawaii really wants to solve this problem, they have to give the fire marshal the rights and the powers and the staff to do the work because it's a serious thing that we've never had one. If you call up the fire department right now and you have a vacant field and you've let it go, you know, and get all kinds of grass on it and debris or whatever, the fire department can't do anything about it. For a long time, there was a house on Oniava that was like that with all kinds of materials, abandoned vehicles, and et cetera. And basically, it really took one of the members of the city council back then to actually go over there and say, we're going to start fining you and putting the fines against your property. That changed their ways and they cleaned up the mess. But it's just amazing that we haven't thought about this in the past, so.
We actually used to have a fire marshal. It was kind of like a government decentralization measure that removed the fire marshal and left it up to the counties. And I will, at the next meeting, I'll get those bill numbers and analyze what they look like. I know in the original drafts, it did include full enforcement powers and full staff and funding. And I will just keep an eye out to make sure that the bills still look like that after conference. Thank you.
Okay. Mahalo. Next, we have Representative Jill Tikuda. There's not a representative with us this evening, but there will be a written report. Next item of business are reports from members who attended other meetings. Levani Lip.
Thank you, Chair. So two, one was the one that Councilmember Kia Aina already mentioned, and it was with Councilmember and three folks from the Department of Facilities Maintenance, including the director, myself, Chair Hicks, and two neighbors from that community, and also the consultant who's working on this project on Akiohala Street. They had done the presentation last month, and there were a lot of questions about this hydrodynamic separator and the location for it. And so when DFM returned on the second Thursday to my water quality meeting, a lot of the residents were concerned. And so I called a meeting and asked for the officials and our council member to join us along with Chair Hicks. And so it was really important, as she indicated, for the community to express our view and for us to share with them that from our vantage point, this would really be a drop in the bucket in terms of addressing a very significant water quality issue. We talked a lot about data and data-driven policy and actions. And they expressed why they had chosen this. It was not entirely based in data, but as Councilmember said, they are trying to use it to leverage more funding. So I realized today that they're playing the long game. They're going to try to use this as an example to hopefully create other types of projects to address stormwater for the entire county. That's what I came away from. But it's true that there are other projects that would have had a much larger impact and footprint, but a lot more bureaucracy and red tape. So this is the challenge of community interfacing with government. So that was meeting number one. Meeting number two that I attended on Tuesday was with Swoosh, which is the stormwater of Oahu stakeholder Hui. This was formerly called the Stormwater Utility. And basically, it was a very long meeting, but I want to come away and share with you that often we've been talking about vacancies in government and especially in city government and how disgruntled we are with inefficiency and as taxpayers having to still foot the bill when a lot of the services and needs are not being met or delivered. But I do have some good news. So the one thing that stood out to me was when we started this process back in 2019, vacancies was a major issue. And basically, under the mayor, it has been a priority to hire positions. And so for this one department, Department of Facilities Maintenance, which is in charge of cleaning streams and drainage and the infrastructure, their goal was to find and fill 100 permanent positions. They have filled 74. And three of them are for storm drain cleaners, which we have been pushing for on this neighborhood board and water quality subcommittee. Of course, we don't know if they're going to come to Kailua with all of our watersheds, but nonetheless, it is really, it's a, you know, it's a kudo. And it's something that, you know, it's a little bit of sunshine, but there's a lot more work to do.
Mahalo. Other members who attended meetings? Donna Wong?
Yes, I attended the meeting that was on base today. It's, UH got the funding, and I believe the title, I left my notes at home, and I was just learning about the project, so it's not, I'm not totally clear. But I think the title is the Committee on Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resilience. And it's for Ko'olau Poco, and it is led by Chip Fletcher, who is a Kailua resident. And we're going to, like she said, there's members from each one of the neighborhood boards plus other community members, which is, I think, is absolutely great. They're asking for the public's input, and the public is involved. And so it's not top-down, we're going from bottom up. I think that's great. Another good news for this project is I learned today that the city is going to be reviewing our Ko'olau Poco Sustainable Communities Plan in 2025. And so this project is for a year, so it should be done in time to be, for the salient points to be included in our plan. So I will keep the board and the community informed on how this committee work is proceeding.
All right. Mahalo. Any other members attend online? Okay. Next order of business are presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is Hawaiian Electric's Wildfire Mitigation Strategy and an update on double poles. The wildfire mitigation strategies of burning importance after the events on Maui. And in some cases, we're going to, you know, have more frequent, longer power outages in order to maintain the safety of the areas. So with us tonight are Cherry Ishikawa and Hert Suie.
Hi. Thank you, thank you all for tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to present this overview and this strategy with you folks. Here we go to the next page. So some of the key takeaways tonight as we present this, you know, wildfires, it's something for Hawaii that is new, but not something new to the U.S. So California has gone through this, so there's a lot of lessons learned that we can take away from this. But the point is, is that we need to consider wildfire and wildfire ignition in Hawaii. Climate change has occurred where this is becoming an issue. So we're, we at Hawaiian Electric, we're expanding our wildfire safety strategy. We had strategies in place before, so it's not new to us, but we are boosting it up, making it more robust, so to speak. One of the key elements, which I'll explain on the next slide, is this may result in more outages because of some of the settings that we're doing, but, and also more frequent and more longer outages. You might have heard in the news, we did get $190 million grant. So we are going to use that grant to, with these trip settings that we have to do, we need to also harden our grids so that we can bring down the outages, lessen the outages as well. So we're going to use that funding to do that. And then we are working with the community. We're not doing this by ourselves. It does take the entire community. We're working with HFD, with the mayor's office, with the counties, so we're not doing this in a vacuum. Next slide. So what we're talking about here, the state, DLNR, created maps that flag for us where they feel are high-risk areas. So for Oahu, the red areas are the highest risk of wildfires. You see that mainly on the, you know, west side, the leeward coast, the leeward side of the island. The orange, however, are medium wildfire risks. So that's the reason why, you know, this area is considered part of that wildfire risk area. Next slide. So some of the things that may be causing the longer outages or more frequent outages is things that we can do with our protective settings at the substations that we have. Right now, well, prior to the wildfires, we have settings that if a palm frond goes in the line or something that's just a transient, it's not a permanent fault, then the circuit would open because it sees the fault, and then after a little while, it would close back in. And if the fault cleared, then the line stays in place. Well, if a line is down or something like that, we don't want energy to keep going into the line. So what we have done now is we've blocked that reclosing function. So what's happening now is even if the fault is transient, like the palm frond goes in the line and then it falls down, the circuit breaker at the substation will see it and will open, and it will not try to close back in. And this is for safety reasons. We don't want to risk a line being down and we put energy back into the line. Okay, so that's why some of your outages will be more frequent because you used to only have these momentaries. Well, now it's going to be permanent till we can inspect the line and get the line back in. The other things that we're doing are we're making the setting, the trip setting, a little bit more sensitive. This is to try to limit the amount of energy that's going into the line should it, should something happen, should it, you know, be on the ground. And this helps reduce the probability of wildfire ignition. So again, that's the reason why more frequent outages, because the setting is more sensitive. And then we've put in precautions where we need to inspect the entire line before we put the circuit back in. This is because we just want to make sure that nothing is going to, you know, cause ignition. We want to reduce that probability. Where, on the next slide, I'll tell you some of the things that although right now you might be experiencing more outages and more frequent outages, there's things that we are going to do to harden so that we can reduce that probability of happening. Okay? The other thing we're doing is during red flag conditions. So now we've experienced in 2023 several red flag conditions, when in the past, maybe we had one or two in the last three to five years. These red flag conditions, we feel are going to become more frequent. So we have a group of human spotters, people that work in the company. When we get that red flag notification that it's coming, we'll do shifts and we'll set people out in areas where we can have a good vantage point. And this is not just for Oahu, this is for Maui, for the Big Island, where we have vantage points, and they'll be the eyes and the ears to spot things. This is not for the long term, though. However, we're going to use technology that will reduce the ability to do that. But for right now, that's what we have. We have the manpower. So till we can get the technology installed, we got to use the manpower. It's all to keep the neighborhood safe from wildfire emissions. Can we go to the next slide? So here are some of the actions that we're going to take that $190 million and harden the system. So we're doing a lot of inspections. We're trying to find those poles that need to be upgraded, trying to find the hardware that needs to be upgraded. We're replacing copper conductor with aluminum conductor. The single strand copper conductor can get brittle, and that brittleness can fall down during high wind situations. So we're replacing that. We're putting fire retardant termi mesh around the pole. We're also looking at where conductors might be slapping in the wind. We might have to put wider crossarms so that it doesn't slap. And we're also looking at other, little bit more expensive technologies like covered conductor. In some situations, we might look at undergrounding, but that is expensive. So just, we want to take a broader approach. We've been speaking with a lot of the California utilities and getting their lessons learned. I talked about other technologies that we're doing. We're installing weather stations so that we can know the actual winds in different corridors. You'd be surprised. It's not uniform. Just down the street could be, you know, 10 mile per hour higher than where you're at. So we're getting weather stations out there. And the other thing is the cameras. These cameras are high-definition cameras, and we're going to work with like fire departments to have access to this. And they have artificial intelligence, so they can detect smoke rise, and then they can triangulate with the different cameras where that location is, because it's not always going to be on a street and at an address. It's going to be with GPS coordinates, right? So it'll give us that, and it can give us within 30 seconds where that fire is. So we're working to put that type of technology in. And it's pretty And it's pretty soon, you know, in the 2024, 2025 timeframe is when we wanna do these, these improvements. Next slide, please. Longer term, just more additional weather technology that helps us keep informed and maybe we can target where we place all of these efforts at. We're also maybe can reduce these sensitive settings and these block reclose once we do the analysis that tells us this is the area that is like really extremely high risk and then this is lower risk. So, so we'll take that into consideration as well. Again, we're looking at undergrounding in strategic areas. We're looking at trees that may be the hazardous areas, maybe corridors where we might need to work with people for trimming or removal. And we're working with the fire agencies. And we're also looking at, on the mainland, they call it a public safety power shut-off, where ahead of time, we may need to shut off the power depending on the mile per hour of the wind, the humidity, those things. So we can definitely reduce the probability of ignition in those cases. So, but we're gonna work with communities, we're gonna work with the authorities and stakeholders in doing so. Then the last slide was on double pole update.
Let's go ahead and get through the double pole, which is just a slide or two, and then we'll open it to questions on both.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, everyone. Kurt Suwae from Hawaiian Electric. Real quick, only one slide, but this was to address concerns and questions that came from the board. We take the double pole issue very seriously. We do apologize for the duration. The community is having to wait for the double poles to be removed. Real quickly, we're just showing a graphic here. There's others that are on joint poles where these double poles occur. So there's a couple types. One where it's shared where there's power lines, there's telecommunications lines and city streetlights. So the double poles that Hawaiian Electric has taken ownership of are the ones where there are multiple parties on the pole, the joint poles. There are also poles that are, only have city streetlights and poles that are, that only have telecommunications lines. And so those poles are managed separately by the telecommunications companies in the city and county of Honolulu. So what we're talking about tonight are where you see poles that have been cut or topped, they call it, and there's still lines attached to them, but the power company, Hawaiian Electric, has moved the power lines because the pole was deteriorated. But we're not always allowed to touch the telecommunications lines because sometimes they result in power, in, in outages of the communications. And so those are the ones where it's been, it's been accumulating. And I think that's what we're trying to get in, in front of in trying to better coordinate with our telecommunications partners and the city when we have additional equipment on the pole. If, if it were an ideal situation, we would remove the pole immediately after transferring the equipment. There are some situations now under this new agreement we have where we can move telecommunications lines as long as it doesn't require what's known as splicing, where that would cause a telecommunications outage. But if it does require additional work and the telecommunications, telecommunications company makes that determination, if it's gonna result in an outage to their customers, then we have to wait until they schedule outage of the telecommunications service. And then they will then cut the line and reconfigure it and they, they themselves will reattach it. And then the pole will be removed. So it, it is a challenge that we're trying to, to get in front of. There are approximately 6400 double poles across Maui County, Hawaii Island, and Oahu. Of that, about 4200 are on Oahu. And we have a plan in place to remove about 1300 poles per year. And this involves working with contractors and better communicating and coordinating with the telecommunications companies. And I'll stop there, Chair, and turn it back over to you.
Okay. Yeah, I think Hawaiian Tel and Oceanic and Hawaiian Electric each maintained poles, shared poles, but were maintained by various ones. And I think about five to 10 years ago, Hawaiian Electric was agreement that Hawaiian Electric would have the lead on all poles. And these lower, bigger cables are the cable TV and telephone ones that haven't yet migrated. And it sounds like you have a plan to finish that migration within five years. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. Thank you, Chair. So just looking at the graphic, the lines that are highest on the pole are electrical and the ones that are lowest on the pole are the telecommunications lines.
Okay.
There's also other service lines and other, that are in the mid, the mid part of the pole.
Okay. But let's open it up for questions and let's do two rounds of questions. First round, dealing with wildfire mitigation measures. And then a second round of questions on double poles. So questions on wildfire mitigation, Gary Weller?
I have quite a few questions. Our committee has been looking at this problem for quite a while. Number one, why on the map is the Kailua land a different color than the red?
Yeah, it's a different priority according to the state DLNR. So red is highest wildfire risk and orange is medium fire wildfire risk. That's their interpretation. So Hawaiian Electric is doing our own analysis because that determination didn't take into account our assets.
So I, I live opposite the sewage treatment plant on AMB's land. And I did a Google search over the last, well, since Google Earth has been around. And last year, the mountain was the driest it had ever been. And up on top of the mountain is a communication center with high voltage lines going up there. And I don't think some of those poles have been changed in 50 years. So in a, in a hurricane or a storm, they might fall. And that's gonna be a big risk of starting a fire there. And almost 200 homes abut that land, and they would all be burned in a wildfire. And so I'm very concerned about that. That's my area of responsibility that elects me to the board.
I'll take that back and, and take a look. Maybe we can do some.
I would like to understand the evaluation of those. And, and of course, there's some in the chanted lakes by the, the women's correction facility. And if a fire started there, you know, that could be a serious issue. And, and there's big high-tension wires there for the water supply and other entities also. So I'm concerned about those. And on Kapahakari Road, this is kind of a double pole issue and a pole maintenance issue and a wildfire issue. For over 40 years now, the vines and vegetation has never been removed on any of the poles on Kapahakari Road. And if we did have a disaster here, we would be depending on the contractors that are in there and the transfer station to take all the debris away. And your poles there are under terrible maintenance. And in a storm, those communication wires connect my side, Pukapu, with the phone company in Kailua. That's the second line. Another line goes down North Galahia. So I'm very concerned about those communication lines being lost. And you, you folks haven't done anything about those for years. I thought when we had a presentation before the virus that Hawaiian Electric was gonna take over the joint pole tenant agreement and be cross-trained to remove the telephone company's infrastructure. On my street alone, the telephone infrastructure is so heavy on your poles that it's bending all the poles. It's not your fault because you guys are far up there. But the poles, you can drive down our street. I could put a level on any one, one of the poles and they've moved a tremendous amount from the weight of the telecommunications stuff. And I understand that now the phone company is running fiber and they're not removing all that old infrastructure. And, and that could cause a problem in a, in a hurricane, a storm, or whatever. Those are some of the, the biggest issues on this side of the island. And the double pole situation is just damn ugly. The question for the double pole guy is how many of those double poles do we have in Kailua? Do you know?
Not an exact count, Board Member Weller, but we, it's in the range of several hundred, 200 to 300 for Kailua area, but we don't have an exact count. It is very challenging to your point where we do, we are aggressively trying to remove those poles, but as we are taking those out more, are, are coming into the equation as we're doing the maintenance.
On my street alone, there's 35 double poles. So, and they've all been there almost since 2000. So, once again, my committee took this up because neighbors are complaining, not necessarily about you folks, but because of all the telecommunications stuff that's making the poles look like they're dangerous. So thank you very much.
This is improvement we need to make, Board Member Weller, and I think that, and working with the communications company, the agreement is 30 days supposed to after we remove our lines that telecommunications or other parties have to relocate theirs. That hasn't been happening. So to your point where our crews can touch the equipment and move it, we are. But there's still poles that require more coordination and we gotta get faster on them.
Thank you both for coming tonight.
Other questions? Steve Trecker?
Yeah. Mentioned, this is kind of a specific question, but you mentioned using termi mesh for fire prevention. And my understanding is that I don't know how long, the last 20 years or so at least, you folks have used termi mesh on the bottoms of poles and parking the ground to prevent termites, which is what it was made for originally, from eating away at the pole. So are you saying that there's gonna be termi mesh further up the pole?
We were not using fire retardant termi mesh. So now we're gonna use fire retardant termi mesh, different type of termi mesh. So it's gonna still on the ground like that, but it's a different material that is not as, I think the existing termi mesh is not very fire-prone, but this one is even more protective against. So if there's fire around on the grass, it should help inhibit it from going up on the pole. It's a different type. But it's still gonna protect the term, from the term.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions tonight? Just a moment. Online? Other board member questions? Okay, please.
Thank you for those updates. As we enter into a new world where fires are gonna be more frequent and larger and you have the need to preventively cut the power off, obviously when a fire is active or anticipating, as your spotter has recognized a dangerous situation preemptively. Can you please take a fresh look at how you will improve your communication to the public and notify them of when these events are occurring? And do it through every means possible, text messages, announcements through media stations, emails. Because the fire in and of itself and the resulting loss of electricity is one thing, but we as residents can better deal with it. The more it has such a difference and the more we keep us updated as the event is unfolding. That would be much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. That is definitely part of our plan, the communication plan, especially for the PSPS, as well as, as we go through these outage periods as well.
Hey, Travis Council?
Just a quick question regarding, we had heard earlier about vacancies at the government and things like that. Do you know if HECO has a lot of open positions? I, I noted with the spotters during the high wind and stuff, clearly more, a need for more manpower or people power. I'm curious, are you experiencing a similar level of hiring challenges or how's your staff?
Good question. I think as we, as Sherry mentioned, we are getting federal funding to do more of, or resilience upgrades to the system. Through that, through time, as, as any other company, there's attrition. People are retiring. We'll be backfilling those positions. We will be working with contractors to perform some of that work. So, and to your point, there, there are hiring challenges in general. I think just with refining trained individuals that go through apprenticeship programs. So we are trying to do more in partnering with community colleges and others that offer that service. Right now, we have a lot of vacancies in our operations team, but all of those require those students' training programs. So we're trying to partner more with, with training organizations and others to get a more qualified workforce in that space. So short answer is yes. Right now, there aren't any immediate postings, but we are looking to, as, as we roll out more infrastructure improvements, bring on more workers.
Okay. Carol Abe?
Yes, I guess, is it, is it Sherry? Early on in that PowerPoint presentation, you know, it's the mention of the $190 million grant from, from the federal government. And then I guess this is for the upgrades. But it, but what I read, I mean, if I read it correctly, it said that 50% of the the money would come from the federal government and 50% would come from HECO customers. So therefore, does that mean that we customers would, you know, expected to be covering about $190 million going into this?
No, it would be half, so $95 million. And that document was presented, that application was presented to our Public Utilities Commission in anticipation of receiving that grant. So in essence, we are doing $190 million worth of hardening for 50% off.
Okay, so you're saying that the, so the customers would be half of that, $95 million roughly? I see.
And we're continuing actually to seek additional federal funding because that just, that's half of an asset or a hardening that we can do at 50% off. So we are, the Department of Energy issued several more grants, and so we are in the process of applying for those.
Just adding to that point that this is all part of the IIJA grants. And there's another round that Chair mentioned called GRIP, all infrastructure-related. And it is not the case where we can get the funding at no cost. There's always going to be a cost share element. We, we need to come up with a portion of each application that we apply for. So it is, we're doing as much as we can to reduce the burden on customers as much as we can.
Okay. Mahalo. Bottom line, Hawaiian Electric has reexamined policies and procedures in response to the Maui wildfires, have implemented new protocols that are more conservative in areas that have higher wind and heat and fire risk assessments and will not automatically restore power. But power will be restored following inspection to ensure that it's safe. And until hardening happens, which will minimize outages and durations in the future, we can expect that out of caution, appropriate caution, that that there will be more outages and restoration will take longer. A separate issue is power outages that are rolling blackout type outages where a generating plant is down for maintenance and then an issue happens in another plant. And right now, our total generating capacity has been impacted following the shutdown of the coal plant while waiting the introduction of renewable replacements. And so there could be some more rolling blackouts, which are separate from these mitigation measures for minimizing wildfire risk. Is that a reasonable summary?
Just wanted to add, Chair, and those may remember a few years back, and I hope to be back again before the board later this year. We also applied for a building resilient infrastructure communities grant with input from many of the board members in the community about powering critical facilities because there's no existing generation in Ko'olapokou. We are reconfiguring certain portions of the system, including in like the Olomana Kailua area, where we could have a version, a variation of a microgrid. We've been applying for that grant for the past three years. And so that would essentially power critical facilities. And this is now our second or third year. We've applied for that fund and I hope to be back with an update this year, Chair.
Okay, well, Sherry Kurt. Mahalo for the informative presentation and mahalo to Gary Weller for arranging this presentation. Thank you very much. Next.
Can community members ask questions?
Yes, I thought I had got all the questions. Who else has a question?
I do, sorry. I had put it in the chat. I didn't know if anybody was monitoring that.
Oh, oh, I didn't see that. Please go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, that's okay. So I just had a question about the wildfire issue. So I'm concerned about the more frequent rolling blackouts where the last time there was an outage for several hours, we didn't have cell service in Lani Kai and people were very worried about it being a problem, should there be an emergency? So I have a bill, I just posted it in the chat HB2710, asking, you know, requiring our telecommunications providers to have backup power, four hours for cell towers and eight hours for ones that are connected to a network. And I wonder if that is sufficient? If you folks are, you know, know that you'll have more frequent outages? And I was hoping you could weigh in, if not now, maybe later? Or follow that bill and tell us if you think that is now not enough?
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look at that. And I'll get back with the telecommunications people that can give you a better answer.
Thank you and thank you, Chair.
Okay, mahalo. We'll move on to our second presentation this evening, which is Rapid Resilient reefs for coastal defense. And we have Rob Tunin.
Thank you very much, Chair, and for board members for making time for us to speak to you this evening. Next slide here. So current options for protecting shorelines globally include shoreline hardening, things like seawalls, breakwaters, groynes, those sorts of things. Next slide. Hawaii, we have all sorts of challenges. You know, folks who've driven up the coastline see this sort of erosion. And really, the only option right now is rock revenge to try to prevent that erosion. And so the next slide, we had an opportunity that we saw from a federal government grant to pursue alternatives, nature-based alternatives to some traditional shoreline hardening approaches. We got excited about this. We went to Ko'olapokohai Civic Club, talked to them about our ideas, asked their input, and with their blessing, we went in for this grant, which we were awarded. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about that research today. So on the next slide, hopefully the video plays, there we go. So the design that we have been working on is based off of a natural reef. This is a loom test of a scaled model that is an eight-foot wave rolling over the structure. And what you can see in the video is that it doesn't actually make it to shore. So this design is working with these perforated structures. On the next slide, get into a little bit more detail. We looked at all of the various testing building materials that we could use to find which ones are the best ones for coral reefs. On the next slide, these are the structures. So that reef press structure is about a seven-foot tall module. The back reef is these five-foot tall modules. Attached to them, they have these settlement and coral growth modules that all of the crevices in there are for collecting coral larvae, getting the oysters and sponges and worms that feed the coral reef, the herbivorous fishes that settle into coral reefs, trying to get a coral reef growing on these structures that will provide wave energy attenuation. On the next slide, we're not trying to just do corals though, because typically when you put something out into the ocean, it immediately grows over with scunge algae. So we have these biodegradable anti-algal coatings, trying to get crustose coral and algae to grow on these structures, that pink rock that people call larval flypaper for corals. This is where corals like to recruit. And the little green fluorescent dots in the bottom right corner, there are the larvae that are coming into these modules with that particular design that Josh has. We're getting forty to eighty times as much coral settlement as you get on a natural substrate. So these things are incredibly effective at getting coral larvae to settle. Next slide. We're also trying to get these sound scapes. So if you record healthy reef sounds and you then play back those reef sounds, these help fishes. This is the place where fish larvae like to settle. So we see high increased settlement of fishers into those habitats, trying to work with the Division of Aquatic Resources and outplant native urchins that are being cultured at Inui Nui. And then also working with our local community and trying to incorporate traditional cultural practices like Umu Kai, where people are trying to increase food security in these structures by having fishes and limu recruit to them. So we're trying to build this diverse and effective coral reef community on these wave attenuation structures. And on the next slide, and even if we do all of that, one of the big challenges that people are familiar with is that we get these marine heat waves, coral bleaching events that then kill corals. So we've been working on ways that we can actually help corals to survive those events. Things like producing foam, basically bubbles over the surface that shade the corals and prevent them from actually bleaching in the first place. Or using underwater lights that attract the zooplankton in the ocean to feed the corals and to help them to survive long enough that they recover their algae and can survive the bleaching events. So we're putting all of these things together. These are all things that we've been doing in the lab, that we've been testing in Konehoi Bay at the Hawaii Institute of Marine Biology. And now on the next slide, this is why we're coming to you today. The four of us, the person running the slides, we've got three people in the room. We are community members. Here was born and raised here. Here in Mili or on the Kailua Kanu Club. Our kids go to school here, our houses are here. We want to hear from community members. This project works in the lab. We are now at the next stage where we are now trying to go out and put in a prototype in the field. So we have developed a relationship with Marine Corps Base Hawaii on Mokapu Peninsula, where we are proposing to install these units in the field. Forty of the reef press structures, twenty of the back reef structures, putting out all of these things to see, does it behave in real life the way we think it does based on all of our lab tests? And we want to hear from you before we go forward with these permits and this project. What do you think? Questions, concerns? What do you like about it? Do you hate about it? Because now is the time for feedback as we start to put this project together.
So this would be an alternative to a traditional breakwater?
The goal is for this is to provide shoreline protection by taking out wave energy. And in those those loom-based tests where we did the wave energy, those are taking out already more than eighty percent of the wave energy before it reaches shore. And so that that goal is that we are protecting the shoreline by taking out the wave energy by using natural coral reefs, which is something that a lot of our community members are telling us that they would prefer to a traditional shoreline hardening approach.
And and this testing will give a sense of the durability and effectiveness of it?
Right, so the goal is to put these things in the water. We have an extensive monitoring program where we'll be doing field testing, stress testing of the objects, looking at scour, looking at how corals recruit to them, how they're growing. Do they actually perform in the field? And how do they perform under like extreme events? If there's a wave or a storm energy, like are they actually holding up? Are they breaking down over time? The goal of getting corals on there is that these structures should live. Like a normal construction project is fifty to a hundred year sort of timeline. If we can get enough coral on there that it grows and covers the entire structure within that fifty to a hundred years, it will persist in perpetuity as a coral reef now instead of as an engineered structure.
Okay, are there questions? Donna Wong?
Yes, is this, are you doing this in conjunction with the marine base?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so where on the base are these going to be located?
So this is the Kailua Bay side, Ulupau, right, just right around the corner from the crater. On the map there, you can see the little blow up. It is tucked in right by on Mokapu Peninsula at the very far end of the base. And then it's within the 500-yard Marine Corps Base security boundary. So that's already an area that's limited in terms of fisher or boating access, which is part of the reason that we chose this in addition to the fact that it's a highly exposed area with constant pounding winds.
Okay, so we have a lot of sewage spills in the bay. Would that area be impacted by those spills?
I honestly don't know.
Yeah, maybe that's something you want to...
That's a thing to look at.
To look at, yeah. And then my last question. How large are the structures and how many will you be putting in?
So you can see on the screen there, the area of the entire deployment is fifty by seventy meters. So and each of those individual units, the large ones are about seven feet tall and the small ones are about five feet tall. So there's forty of the large units and twenty of the smaller units that we will use to then measure the wave action and how much of the wave energy are we taking out as the waves pass over those structures?
And how are you anchoring them?
They're being anchored in with a, I don't know if you're familiar with construct pilty, pilty anchors? What people use for houses when they drill down into concrete and you have basically a pole? You can do the same sort of thing with a threaded bar that goes into the seafloor. And it's a technology that's been used in other places to basically do these pilings that you drill down into the seafloor with some epoxy and an expanding bolt and it holds it in place. And again, this is part of the testing to make sure that it is working and how much energy does it take to actually cause one of those bolts to fail? Or can we get them to fail? Like that is part of the testing of the protocols.
So if one of these large platforms comes loose, what is the, what's the recourse? What is, what is the action going to be?
So, yeah. Just to add one thing on the anchoring, we're actually doing anchoring testing in advance of putting the structures in. So we will know before putting these large multi-ton structures in the water how much load the anchors themselves can hold in that substrate to make sure that we're putting pilings deep enough into the substrate to hold those loads. And then we're measuring the loading on the structures in a wavelength test so that we, you know, these are one to six scale tests that you saw earlier so we actually understand the loading very well. So with the factor of safety, so like any other construction project, the intent is to have a factor of safety on the loading so that these, these are not going to move. And then they'll be monitored routinely by divers and by LiDAR measurements to make sure we're not seeing scour or movement of the structures.
Okay, thank you.
And just to answer your second question, what happens if something were to happen? There is a contingency for that. It is built into the project that if anything does not perform to that safety margin that Ben just mentioned, there is funding to remove it all and to restore it to its original baseline condition before we started the project.
David Lyer?
So if I understand you, the, from the location, it looks to be near the Pyramid Rock and North Beach area of the Koneoai Marine Base? Is that correct? More on the Kailua Bay side? And the purpose of having this technology in the reefs is, is to reduce the wave action? And why is that such an important thing to spend? I'd like to understand how much is this going to cost and who's paying for it?
So the funding for this comes from the Defense Advanced Research Programs Administration, DARPA. The total project is a five-year project that is funded for $25 million of research and development. The installation itself is a small part of that, basically part of it because five years of labor for the entire team that is involved in that project causes, costs a lot of the funding for it. But the purpose of it is that in many places along Hawaii's coastlines, where we are seeing shoreline erosion, it is because there is a pounding wave energy in those locations. We are looking at losing shoreline infrastructure like roads, houses, airports that have no protection in front of them. And the options right now are shoreline hardening or move them. What we hope is if this works, the way we believe it will, based on the laboratory testing, is that we will have an option for communities who do not want shoreline hardening in their communities to pursue something else. So this is the prototype that we are proposing to put in to provide the testing to show whether or not it actually works in the field in the way we hope.
So this technology is not currently deployed in any place else in the world?
This technology has never been developed before this project. This is, this is the, Hawaii is leading the world in the development of this technology. And what we are trying to do is base it off of Hawaiian reefs, which are actually what protects our shorelines naturally in this nature-based and nature-inspired design. And if this is successful, this will be a technology that Hawaii could export to other Pacific islands and other nations around the world because this is being developed.
All right, other questions? Levani Lipton?
If I understand it correctly, it has a dual purpose. So it's supposed to help mitigate, I forgot what you just called it.
The wave energy?
Wave energy?
Yes, so we're trying to provide coastal protection.
Okay, so coastal protection. And then the other one is to actually seed coral? So to expand the corals?
Trying to use coral restoration as the tool. So with climate change, as we're either losing coral reefs because of bleaching or community like pollution, sewage, those sorts of issues, as we're losing coral reefs or if we're getting sea level rise, our waves are coming into our shores unabated. And that high energy is what causes, can potentially cause shoreline erosion. It depends on the location. There's lots of different, this is not a solution for everyone for everywhere. But in those places where the erosion is being caused by high wave energy, this would provide an alternative solution to those communities.
Yeah, so that, I mean, this is really important. It's a really cool project and I'm glad that it's so groundbreaking and Hawaii is doing it. I also share Donna's concern. There is a sewage outfall pipe. And so in terms of just impacting the corals, I would, I don't know. Maybe it's not close in proximity, but that is a concern. And I was also wondering about like big storm surges. And you kind of answered that because I guess you're going to test it out. This is the pilot. And then I was wondering about other like wildlife. Like, do you think it'll be interesting to whales and other types of wildlife? Or they're, they're just gonna, it's not a... not a, it's not gonna be an issue for them?
About twelve feet of water, so we don't expect many whales are coming to visit.
Okay, I didn't realize it was that shallow. I thought it was like going down, okay.
So the, but the goal of this project and the reason that there are a bunch of coral reef biologists like myself who are excited and working with ocean engineers and people who are designing these structures, uh, is because we are trying to figure out ways to protect and enhance our natural coral reefs. And the real question in my mind as a coral reef biologist is do we actually know enough to start a coral reef? Can we create a coral reef somewhere where there isn't one right now? And so part of this is testing the biodiversity and looking at what happens through time. Because I would argue we have not successfully built a coral reef anywhere on this planet to date and can we actually do it and why you be the first?
And then one quick question, so the corals that you're trying to seed and grow, those are native to here?
Everything here is native. We are not bringing anything in. This is all native species that are in Kaneohe and Kailua Bay right now.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Uh, I had a couple of questions. The first was, is this the same, we had a presentation, I think, about refence? So I was just wondering if this is the refence?
This is the project, yes.
Okay, and then the other thing I was wondering if there's like a timeline, um, or you're still just too early for that, we don't know when it's going to start?
We are starting, we are trying to put together our permit application now and we hope to start installing the prototype as soon as we can get permits. So that's why we're asking for everyone's feedback now.
So like that's like this year or whenever the permits, I don't know how long our mistake?
Sure, we'd love to do it this year, there's a permit in place.
And then, um, it's five years, so after five years, will you be removing the prototype?
If there is no one who would take on the ownership of the structure, then it would be removed at the end of that. What we are hoping is that if we can demonstrate the value of this project, that there would be an agency that would be willing to take on ownership of it and maintain it into the future, whether that be any sort of state or federal agency is yet to be determined. So we have five years to sort that out.
It, it seems like there'd be a possibility, if it's successful, to determine what the long-term durability of it would be and that might be another grant.
Exactly, so that is our hope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you Chair. Yeah, thank you for this awesome presentation. Sorry I can't be there in person, I am a board member. I do have a good amount of knowledge about some of this reef stuff. I've worked in the climate space for most of my career. Um, so I do have a couple of questions that are a little bit specific as follow-ups. Um, yeah, I would love if you could explain the, the specifics of your type of reef technology. Related second question is you just mentioned in one of your responses that we would be one of the first places to be quote-unquote "growing reefs." To my knowledge, that's not true, that there are actually some reef regrowth projects in the Bahamas that are pretty far along now and seem to be going well. Um, so I'd, I'd actually like to know more if you're familiar with those projects and if so, how this would be different and relatedly, like how are, how the technology that you're testing actually fits into the different sort of, uh, classifications of what people think they're doing when they say that they're growing reefs, like, uh, growing from scratch, growing from regrowth? Really, how are you going about this and is it brand new sort of genetic material or are we? Yeah, if you could just get into the specifics, it would be helpful to know how we're relating to local reefs here and, and all of that.
Well, please don't go into too much specifics because we have, we, we still have a motion to, to address tonight, but if you can briefly answer the question.
Sure, I, uh, so to briefly answer your question, yes to all of those things. We are doing all of it, we are testing every reef restoration technology that we know of that's been used, so breeding from sexual propogules, micro fragmentation, all of those things. Uh, we are trying to implement all of them. And when I say that I would argue that there has never been a reef that has been built on this planet, it's because people look at corals. And corals is not a reef, a reef is twenty-eight or three thousand species of organisms. And when we actually look at most coral reef restoration projects, what they have are dozens of corals and they very rarely look at the rest of reef biodiversity. And that's what we are trying to do that is fundamentally different because our communities don't eat corals and they want the organisms that come with the coral reefs in terms of all of that diversity, because it's the ecosystem functions that those organisms provide to our communities that most of them want out of a coral reef, not necessarily just the And I'd be happy to talk to you in great length about all of the details anytime.
No, yeah, no, that was very helpful and meaningful clarification. Um, and yeah, it wasn't intended offensively at all, I just really was hoping to understand. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Um, I have a question about when this reef does become fully developed, how will it prevent waves? Because we know on the North Shore in Waikiki, it reefs do create waves, but when they've come fully developed, maybe in fifty years or a hundred years from now, will it make bigger waves?
Yeah, so the, the simple answer in terms of how this design differs is that the reason that we're using a perforated structure and there are all the holes in there is that it's, it uses what is called flow separation. So as a wave moves through it, it basically beats itself up rather than having a wave that builds and then plunges, which happens on a hard substrate like a breakwater or a normal reef. And so the goal on this is actually to have the reef, the wave dissipate. And as you can see in the video as it goes along, the wave doesn't even reach the shore.
So when the, uh, fifty years from now, the coral takes over the structure and it fills up all the pukas, right? Wouldn't it work more like a, a break, uh, water and create bigger waves? Or are you saying that the corals will never fill up the pukas, the holes?
Uh, that's what we're trying to find out, the, the, in, in water testing.
Okay. Donna Wong.
So you're gonna create a whole coral ecosystem?
That is the goal and that's, that
With lewo?
With fishes?
Okehe?
Well, okehe don't live on the reef.
They only live on the rocks, that's right, on the rocks, okay.
So I'm not gonna promise okehe.
Okay, but lewo?
Size of a football field.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a final, final note, thank you Chair. Uh, one, congratulations on the DARPA funding, that's amazing to pull twenty-five million dollars into Hawaii from federal funding and also the collaboration on ocean engineers and other things. You're doing excellent work, graduation on your endowed chair position as well. Congratulations there. I think as an island community, we are very much so undervaluing this work and this could certainly be something that restores our shorelines, provides natural and reef rehabilitation. So please kudos to you and, and continue the great work, thank you.
Can I just comment really quickly on the sewage question because I've thought a lot about this as a coral biologist as well, um, on this project? And there are already corals that are healthy at this site. Um, they are a bit more sparse than we're used to seeing in other places, but we only move corals into places where there are, the water quality is good enough for corals to currently live and thrive. Um, and we are also doing a small test before anything like large numbers of corals are moved, um, to make sure that the corals will, will be healthy and survive. Um, in addition to that, a lot of the corals are coming from the site itself and just being placed on top of the structure instead of on the ground where they currently are.
Okay, well mahalo and congratulations on, uh, Super Initiative and we wish you luck. Uh, next order of business is, uh, board business with an individual motion which, um, has changed slightly from what was published because the bills themselves have changed. The individual motion is the Kailua Neighborhood Board opposes Senate Bill thirty-two oh two and House Bill sixteen thirty, which require the counties to allow the development of a minimum of three housing units per existing residential lot. Uh, this motion is being made by Donna Wong, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Jade Lau. Before we get into discussion, Donna, would you like to further introduce the motion?
I, I would. In our land use planning structure, the counties under Hawaii Revise Statute, um, forty-sixth have given the sole authority for zoning. And what these two bills do is take away that zoning ability of the counties by dictating, by saying, counties, you have to allow a minimum of three structures on a lot. They would have, they, they have exceptions, you know, if it's on a hill or a few other things in a floodplain, et cetera. But it's dictating what the county has to do. The lots can be as small as two thousand square feet and the county, unless they meet one of these exceptions, would not be able to deny that application for the three homes on even a two thousand square foot lot. The DPP in their testimony on this bill said they strongly oppose language in the bills that would permit the development of monster homes in already dense neighborhoods. So if anybody's been following the monster home catastrophe, the council just passed a bill to start cracking down on monster homes and now here comes this, these two bills. So far Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board and, um, and Kamaki have adopted resolutions in opposition to these bills. And, um, I think Diamond Head, Kapahulu, uh, and Kaneohe and possibly Wampanoaka will be looking at the bills also. That this, these bills would also eliminate public participation because as it stands now, when an applicant wants to change zoning, it goes through three hearings and then final votes for the council. This bill says the director shall determine yes or no. So public participation is totally cut out. So I urge everyone on this committee to vote in support of this bill, I mean, this motion. To oppose.
Okay, other discussion. Jade Lau.
So in the little bit of research that I have done on this bill, the thing that I think that I would want every constituent within this community to understand, look at who is backing this bill. This bill is backed by the real estate community, it's backed by the finance community, it's backed by the relocation people. This bill is not backed by vested stakeholders in their neighborhood. This bill is backed by business people who are looking at an amazing profit margin to be had. So when the saying is consider the source, this bill clearly needs that ounce of common sense from our constituents, from everybody on this board. This bill is not for our communities, this bill is for somebody's corporate checkbook, which I can almost guarantee will not come back into our islands or into our communities the way we want it or the way we like it.
Other discussion. Chuck Brenness.
Yes, just briefly, as a longtime urban planner and, uh, former chair of the board, uh, the motion that is prepared by Donna is excellent and deserves full support.
Other discussion. Yes, sir.
Really glad that you're opposing this bill. And the only comment I have to say is this, if it's passed, will turn Oahu into Manhattan.
Yeah, not just Oahu, every single island, because the part of this that is really frightening is this takes away every county's right to manage their own county. It gives some autonomous individual in the state level complete power over our neighborhoods. And I don't know about anybody else, I'm the person that has a four-story illegal building behind my house. It would really, really be unfortunate if the neighbors on each side of me decided to tear down their houses and build six tiny homes, because they could.
And it, and it wouldn't be the, the, the neighbors deciding that. Your, your next door neighbor could sell their property to a developer. A developer buys your next door neighbor's property, puff, and, 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 and the same developer buys the property on the other side of you. And, and on both of them, they tear down the house, they build three houses each side. Michelle Mattson.
Thank you so much Chair. Uh, I have just been observing this meeting, but I am the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair for the Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights Neighborhood Board. And I fully agree with Donna and the rest of your board members who have spoken on this. I cannot stress enough the people who are backing this for their own self-serving purposes, including a senator who wants to create Singapore out of the island of Oahu, who introduced the Senate version, and, uh, all those who are, uh, totally beholden to the development industry. Our established neighborhoods are in jeopardy with, with these types of proposed invasive, uh, legislations, legislative, uh, bills. And even the city council has greased through, through their zoning committee, high-rise developments under chapter two oh one H, four hundred feet high in Makalimoeiliili, two hundred and fifty feet high at the freeway entrance westbound to downtown, uh, from Kapahulu. This is insane development, it has no planning, uh, principles and, uh, it needs to revert back to community-based planning of, to the community that is familiar with the history and the complexities of their own communities. DPP is, uh, rubber stamping several things. We need to have direct communication with DPP and we need to defend our communities. Thank you.
Levani Lipton.
Just wanna underscore the point that Rep. Martin said, that she is very concerned that this may pass unless the community comes out in force testifying against it. So everyone who's in this room, please go and contact ten to twenty people and get those testimonies in and whoever's watching on Olelo, please do the same, we have to stop this.
Senate Bill three-two oh two and House Bill one-six-three zero and, uh, Rep. Martin also indicated that they're only gonna have a single hearing on this. She'd said that before. Okay, um, we're about out, out of time and it's important to, to have a vote, but Steve Trecker.
I just wondered if Rep. Fuzzy Burdick could tell us the status of it? I was under the impression that it passed through the House, it got sent to the I was under the impression that it passed through the House and got sent to the Senate? And do you know what's happened in the Senate on it?
Correct, we just had crossover today, so it hasn't been re-referred in the Senate. It, I believe on both sides, the Senate version was also given a joint committee hearing where it will have a single committee hearing. And I will say for the House version HB 1630, you know, I share the same concerns with Rep. Martin. And I was really surprised to see when I opened up that testimony file, dozens of testimonies, maybe 50 pages of testimony, all in support. There was one opposition and like two comments only. So that really kind of threw me off. I was like, where's my community on this? I thought they were going to back me up to vote no. So I did vote no on that bill, but I, you know, we do look at testimony, it really does matter. The community really needs to show up on this because right now it's just a bunch of, a lot of developers and a lot of, you know, pro-housing advocates, which, you know, they do have their points there that they want more housing for all, but I just don't think this is the way to go about it. Question for me?
Just, Travis Council. Just quickly building off of that, I agree that this is probably not the tactic to, to go about. But I think at least maybe for our housing subcommittee to think about what the solution we want to see is because we have extremely high housing costs and a really high barrier to get into those housing costs. And if we're going to oppose, you know, opportunities to get more housing, again, agreeing this might not be the way to do it. But I think we should come up with a solution that we could get behind and present that as an alternative at some point.
Bacon Homes Task.
Okay, Donna Wong.
Yes, so let me give you one statistic. Out of the DPP, every year has an annual report. So their 2021 annual report says, shows that there are 80,225 housing units on Oahu that have been approved and permitted, but they haven't been built. So there's houses out there, there, there's land waiting, there's permits given. Why haven't they been built?
Okay, I'm going to cut off discussion at this point, call for the vote. Josiah Akow. Josiah still with us? Travis Council.
Aye.
Aye. Amber Granite. Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Abstain.
Abstain. David Laia.
Yes.
Yes. Jade Lau. Yes. Mike Lee. Yes. Levani Lipton.
Yes.
Yes. Carol Mearschero.
Yes.
Yes. Kayla Morrell. Yes. Kate Ryder. Claudine Tomasa.
Yes.
Yes. Steve Trecker. Yes. Evan Weber. Evan Weber still with us? Kerry Weller. Yes. John White. Donna Wong. Yes. Jeff Suckernick.
Yes.
Yes. And Chair votes yes. The motion passes, 13 in favor, zero opposed and one abstention. Next order of business is approval of minutes. Are there any fractions, changes, additions to the February 1st minutes? Hearing none, minutes are so approved. Committee reports, any committee chairs wish to amplify their reports? Otherwise, reports will stand as published. Report stand as published. Committee membership motions, any changes to committees? Committees stand. Chairs report, committee agendas for April are due to the Chair by Sunday, March 24th. This meeting is adjourned at 9:56.